I'd like to call to order the Charter Township of Oxford Board of Trustees meeting. Today is Wednesday, May 10th, 2017. The time is 7:01. Please pay your respects to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no end and justice for all.
Please note the roll.
Noted.
It's been moved on the agenda.
I'll make my motion to move the agenda.
It's been moved and seconded. I'd like to request that Ron Davis be moved up near the front. He's got an affair something prior. It's only going to be a nation that he's going, so.
I'll make the consumer separation.
Yes. That's going to be a quick motion when he's out of here.
Okay, I'll move. I'll make my motion to move the agenda with item 11A.
12G.
With 12G, move up to 11A.
Has been a motion?
Second.
And it's been seconded. All of you signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Public comment, excuse me, under the consent agenda. Is there any questions?
Yes.
Yes.
Do we have the professional services committee still working? Is that an active committee?
I can't answer that.
Okay, I know we had it with, and we have contacts for the legal services. I went through the billing and saw, I don't want to, well, I saw some billings that I wanted to question on our planner, and we might need to have a policy in place. And I'll give you the example. On page two of the consent agenda shows a couple of things regarding pricing on surveying for the master plan. And at our planning commission meeting that night, we had the survey brought up, and we were told to go home, look at it, and if we had any questions, to call Matthew with it. So I called Matthew and told him that, I talked to him for about two minutes, and here he billed us for a half an hour because I made a phone call to him. And I don't want to be contacting the planner if we're going to get charged for that kind of services. But then I go through the billing, and I see that the format, the revised survey, the final updates to the survey, and some background studies were done on it, but we still got billed 37.50 for a phone call I made to him to tell him that there was a "I" not dotted. So.
Jack, could I make a recommendation that myself? And anytime I have problems with a consultant, I meet him face to face.
Yep.
Discuss it and see if we can correct it. If not, we can take further action. I'll be more than happy to sit in with you.
Okay.
To talk to him. He's here on Wednesdays.
Yep.
Anything else on the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to move the consent agenda as presented.
It's been moved.
Second.
And seconded, or supported, whatever. Roll call.
Trustee Curtis.
Yes.
Trustee Nichols.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Trustee Dur.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Treasurer Dunne.
Yes. Public comment on items not on the agenda. Ron?
Thanks, Bill, for moving me up. Real quickly, trustees, I just want to bring you up to date on the office move for the Parks and Rec at Seymour. We have awarded all of our bids faith and sense from what appears doing the major construction. Plumbing is done by SOS out of Leonard. Electrical is Hartwick Electric of Oxford. Dave Cameron and Sons of Oxford will be doing our well. Goyette is doing the HVAC. They're out of Flint. The insulation company, I forgot its name, they're out of Metamora. Our septic is being put in by C and M of Leonard. The site work is being done by Sarah Dan of Oxford. The doors are being done by Pioneer of Oxford. The floor covering is being done by Mike Keane of Oxford, and the painting is being done by Jesse. Jesse's Paint of Oxford. So again, we're following the same format we did with the pole barn. As you recall, we came in $200,000 under bid when we did it this way, so.
That's unheard of.
We're pretty excited that we're using, 90% of the people are actually involved in our programs with their kids and stuff, so we're keeping the money here local. We're pretty excited. So if you get a chance to come out to the park, we're going full guns right now. Our goal is to be in by August 1st, so if you're out by the park, please stop in and see it. Real quick update on the bond. Our tagline is "Bond in Motion." So if you go to our parks, the one at Seymour, we have a sign up. We'll start recognizing all those companies who got involved. And again, we're following the same format. We didn't go out to bids. We're doing quotes or seeking, I guess if you want, bids from local vendors that we have built relationships, and I'm happy to say that we're coming under bid or under price on a lot of stuff. So I certainly want to give a shout out to Levy, and Mr. Dunn made the call for us. I forgot how much money we have saved per ton, but we had to have 20,000 tons of 21AA brought in for the park.
It was a few dollars a ton.
Just a few dollars. So again, it was Bill Dunn and the Levy Corporation for helping us out. TKMS stepped up to the plate for trucking. Sarah Dan locally did all the site work. So if you get out to the park, you'll see all of our parking lots have been already done. We're pretty excited about that. The tennis courts were started this week, so all the fences down. Premier fencing out of Saginaw, got that. And then Birmingham Seal Coating of Oxford is going to be doing all the flat work at the tennis court. So again, you know, our goal was to hit the ground running, and we're doing that between the bond and the office move. It should be exciting here, and I'll try to keep coming back every month and give you an update. Thanks.
Thank you, Ron. Let's move on to public hearing.
I'll make the motion to a public hearing to discuss a request for a new Class C liquor license for 955 South LaPierre Road, Oxford, Michigan, Mary Jo's Smokehouse.
It's been moved. It's our support.
Second.
Second.
Okay, this is seconded. We're now in session. Is there any public?
We got a vote on that.
Oh, all in favor?
Roll call.
Roll call. I'm sick, guys. I'm sick.
Trustee Nichols.
Yes.
Trustee Dur.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Supervisor Dunne.
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
And Trustee Curtis.
Yes.
Okay, now is there any public comment?
I will start. Good evening, members of the board. Mr. Supervisor, I'm sorry, I don't feel well. I'm Kelly Allen, appearing on behalf of the applicant tonight with the law firm of Atkinson Need, Allen &amp; Rentrup. I want to thank all of you who we've met with and has worked so hard, with Danica in particular, to put all these pieces together to be on the agenda tonight. You have in your packet our applications and some documents that I worked with Mr. Rentrup on with to have agreements in place to protect the township from losing this license in some way and ensuring that this license does come to fruition as we are presenting tonight. What I'd like to do is introduce you to this family because you're going to get to know them, I think, with regard to all the things that they'll be involved with in the township for years to come. This is truly a family business. The name of the company is Mary Jo's Smokehouse, and so I got to introduce you to Mary Jo. Because, Ms. Mary Jo, please stand. Mary Loughlin, she is the mom of this family, and she's getting a nice Mother's Day gift by trying to get this accomplished here tonight. And then since she was the most important, she was first, and then in order importance continuing, and I may have some problem later, but. Leanne, this is Leanne Speich. She is the other mom, so she's Mary Jo's daughter. And then Danica, let me stand. This is Leanne's daughter, Danica. Her last name is Dunlap, like the street here. Nolan Dunlap is here, brother. Want to stand up, Nolan? Husband? That wouldn't be good. Sorry. And this is Kelby. This is Kelby Speich, and he's also one of Leanne's sons. And then Michael. This is Michael, Leanne's husband, and the dad of this Motley Crue. John Young is not here. He is one of their cousins. He resides in Texas, so he couldn't be here tonight. So basically, this family has been in the restaurant business and specifically the Texas barbecue business for over 30 years. They have a Concho Pearl in Texas, and it's in San Angelo, Texas, right? And but they have been in Michigan, had been in Michigan for quite some time, moved back down to Texas. Their kids went to Fenton schools. They missed Michigan, they came back, and they've been here now for nine years. They've been looking for a site to do their second Concho Pearl and family, and they landed in Oxford Township and are very blessed to work with Mr. and Mrs. Roth, who are the landlords who are here tonight. And it's been a great working relationship, and as you know, it's the old big boy building, so they're going to be doing a lot of work in there, and you probably won't recognize it when they are done. They have, we've provided a menu to you. It is traditional Texas-type barbecue. They have a smoker that is a very expensive piece of equipment that has the ability to smoke 1,000 pounds of meat at a time. So hopefully you'll come hungry. Their opening date is late July. Rumor has it that some guy named General Custard is going to come by on August 4th from the Lone Ranger Parade, and so they're going to be shooting for that event and try to make that a big day, not just for them, but also for the township. Part of their operation plan will be to have sort of specialty dinners, hosting periodic dinners and beer dinners where they pair certain beers with their menu items, and where their chef will be doing pairing for customers and individual types of atmospheres for their customers. They will be hiring 30 to 40 employees. That's a lot of folks that they hope to hire locally, and their hours of operation, I think, are very conducive to what the township has to offer. They won't be open later than 11:00 on Fridays and Saturdays, Friday and Saturday nights. Again, we have agreed to take certain steps to keep this license in the township, seeing as you only have three left in your quota to give, and they're respectful of that, and they don't plan on going anywhere real soon. They have a five-year and two-five-year options with Mr. Roth, and my gut tells me, and my experience tells me, that they're going to be so successful that they'll be there for a lot longer. We do have quite a few supporters here tonight in addition to the family. Well, maybe this is just the family. No. Okay. Some non-family members that I'd appreciate coming up and saying a few words about these people, and obviously we'll answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you for giving us, me, the opportunity to speak on behalf of this fake family. I want you to know that I have known them for over 20 years. I am an attorney. I'm in semi-retirement right now.
Can we have your name just for the record, please?
Sherry Lebo.
Thank you, Sherry.
Okay, thank you. And I have known them from over 20 years, when we first met them when they lived in Fenton, and they are upstanding members of the community. They're the type of people that give back to the community and will be actively involved in the community. And I think part of their program at the restaurant is to be more family-oriented, and I think they will be very successful. They're very hardworking people, and I hope that you approve their liquor license. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jackie Slezak, a 16-year resident of Oxford. I had actually gone in on a business appointment and also as a mother of teenage boys, inquiring as about to when they would be open for jobs for the kids. So I got to know the family a little bit. I think they are really interested in investing in our community, and I think it would be a great place to have our young teens work. So I hope you will approve their liquor license.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
My name is Susan Brock, and I just wanted to speak on behalf of the family as well. We've known them for several years, been teachers to my kids, and have been very involved in our family and in the community, and worked with Mrs. Speich, and I've got a lot of personal experience, and I think they would be a great asset to the community and to the township. And, you know, I work for Open Christian School. We're a member of the Oxford Chamber of Commerce as well, and I just think this would be a huge asset to the community.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
I move to close the public hearing.
Nope.
I don't, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Speaking, Marlon. I am a 13-year resident of Oxford Township. I have four children. I've been in the restaurant industry for over 20 years now. I have had the opportunity to get to know the family here over the last couple of months, and they're wonderful. They're very welcoming. Everything's bigger in Texas, obviously, and they're very welcoming to people being added to their family. As this community grows, they want to grow along with it. I think that having a family restaurant, now that a lot of them in the township have closed, I think they would be a great asset. I used to work for Chili's and again worked for Montana Steakhouse. Unfortunately, both of those closed, but we're both great family restaurants, and I really feel that they have the ability to add that to our community as well. So we'd appreciate it if you'd grant the liquor license. I'd love to bartend for them, so. Thanks, guys.
Couldn't we expect Guy Fieri in here? Joe?
I move to close the public hearing for the request for a new Class C liquor license for 955 South LaPierre Road at 7:14 PM.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Onto the first readings. I have a question on this before we get to going. It seems my memory brings up that anytime an ordinance comes in front of the township board, it should be okayed by them to go ahead and spend time on consultants to come up with these ordinances? Does that hold true not only for the ordinance we're going to see with the drinking, underage drinking, and the zoning ordinance? My concern is that if the Planning Commission sits together with their ordinance review subcommittee and puts a bunch of ordinances up there, and we spend money on the planner, the engineer, the attorney, spending all this money, and this happened before, that comes in front of us and we go, "We didn't want this." It just seems right that we should okay any ordinances that are going to our consultants.
I agree.
Yes, Jack?
Back a few months ago, the previous planning commissioner had talked to you about what was in our budget, and he references $2,500. And he mentioned that we had some ordinances that had to be streamlined and corrected for some non-conforming entities that are in our community. While you bring up a good topic, it should be run by the board that, before any money is spent, but these ordinances that we brought up, our ordinances only to fix inequities in our ordinances that we have right now, and I think if we had a procedure to present to the township board, it would be good, because right now they are continuing to work on ordinances that there are changes that may be needed, but the ones presented now must be needed. So that's what we worked on. In the future, I think they should present a list of the ones that they're looking at, and I don't know if they have to be approved or recommended for approval, or if it's just common knowledge that they're working on it. What's your suggestion? I can take that to Planning Commission on tomorrow night.
Just off my head here, as light as it is, that they recommended the township board that they look at these ordinances for this reason.
Okay.
And then the board go, "Okay, have at it. You're allowed to bring in the consultants," just the same way we do with the ordinances we're going to be doing tonight.
Yep.
Let's move on. I just wanted to throw that to you.
Got a question down there, Bill. Are they talking about making amendments to existing ordinances or new ordinances?
Existing ordinances. Bring them up to date.
Okay, so amendments to the.
Tweaking existing ordinances.
Okay.
But I thought our motion for the board level was for any new ordinances.
That'd be a different.
I think that's what's on the books.
I just want to clarify.
Yeah, because right now, we're not introducing any new ordinances. What we're doing is we're amending some of the current ordinances that have some sticking points.
This is more administrative.
Yeah.
This will only affect the ordinance 67A, because other ordinances will come through this board. They won't be approved by the planning commission.
Okay, just food for thought.
I move instead of second reading a possible adoption of the amendments to the Charter Township of Oxford zoning ordinance 67A regarding, one, amendments to sections 3.8, 13.5B, and 14.3Q related to driveway, side entry garages and sidewalks. Two, amendments to sections 9.7E and 9.8G related to the development entranceway signs. Three, amendments to section 2.2 and 3.5 related to bulk propane sales and dispensing stations. And four, amendments to section 6.13H related to open-air business outdoor sales and display of products for the June 14th, 2017, to our Township of Oxford Board of Trustees regular meeting.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
This isn't roll call.
We'll do a roll call.
Roll call. Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Trustee Dur.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes.
Yes.
Trustee Curtis.
Yes.
Trustee Nichols.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Let's move on to fire department. Oh, wait. Ronnie?
Fire department.
Did I, we moved you up, though.
Yeah, after this. Now we go.
Thanks, Pete. You'll be getting a Christmas card as well. Just before you is our annual fireworks. This year's July 7th and 8th. Again, we're going to have the same firework company we've had for the last nine years. Skirbet Carnival will be out. We're doing the Jam for Feds, again, to raise funds for our disabled vets. They'll be doing all the live entertainment Friday and Saturday. We've got the youth baseball tournament Saturday, Sunday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, so, you know, we're expecting the normal 20,000 people there over the two days. So as you know, the big draw is fireworks Friday night and Saturday night. So again, we'll work closely with Pete. It's a well-oiled machine. We have the same pyrotechs that we've had every year. Pete's staff knows what to do. Our staff knows what to do, but we just need your motion to allow Bill to sign the contract and proceed.
I move to permit William Dunn, Oxford Township Supervisor, authority to sign the 2017 Colonial Fireworks Contract with the annual Seymour Celebration. Dates are Friday, July 7th and Saturday, July 8th, 2017. Further, the Oxford Township Parks and Recreation Department will continue to work closely with the Oxford Fire Department and the Oakland County Sheriff's Department to ensure that all safety and health regulations are followed as pertains to the community event.
Second.
Moved and seconded. That's Payne. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thanks, Ron.
Thank you.
Let's move on to unfinished business. 11A proposed ordinances. Skip McCarroll, our prosecutor.
Good evening, Mr. Supervisor and board members. How may I assist this evening?
Just give us a quick overview of what's in front of us and why you want it for the public, too.
Certainly. I've issued a written memorandum to all of you, and there's two ordinance adoptions that we'd be suggesting. One is causing a police response. The other is attempted crime. There is a Michigan statute that makes every crime chargeable as an attempt, and what it does is reduce the potential jail time in half. Fines and costs remain the same. The 523 District Court, which handles the prosecutions for your community, has indicated that they have a higher comfort level if there is an ordinance adopted to allow that charge to be laid at the local ordinance level, and we have done so with Orion Township. It's been extremely successful in plea bargains. The notion of causing a police response is something that we put together a while back, and what this is principally used for is situations where we have individuals charged with criminal acts where we can prove that crime, but circumstances or features or the individual involved, it may be somewhat inappropriate, if you will, to see them charged and convicted of a criminal act when instead they could be charged with a civil infraction and assessed a $250 fine as a maximum. Often we find this where there's someone of some years of age that's never been involved in law enforcement before. One example is they get in an argument with their neighbor. Sheriff's Department arrives, cites that person with disorderly conduct. The opposing neighbor essentially has no particular grievance at that point in time when they're in court, but the crime's been committed. What do we do with it? As a prosecutor, we're charged with prosecuting those crimes we can prove. We're not going to dismiss the crime and expose the township and the sheriff's department to liability, so we have this in our arsenal in terms of a plea down. And on the reverse side of that is a release of all claims against all parties, which ends everything right then and there. It's very effective, very efficient. We don't use it a lot, but we find instances where it's very helpful.
Skip, if this individual, say you plead it down.
Yes.
And within a month does it again, can they bring it back?
All crimes that we dismiss, I dismiss without prejudice, which means that I can bring them back. We, to be fair and honest about it, in six years, Joseph Toy, who is now Judge Toy, and I prosecuted for in Township, we have 97% conviction rate, it's closer to 98%. The dismissals that we afford typically are because the individual's an informant and we get a request from the sheriff's department. We don't dismiss many cases, and in Oxford Township, we've seen that to be the same thing. Your sheriff's department does a very efficient job of charging appropriately and exercising their discretion as street-level bureaucrats very, very well. They do a good job, and we have very clean cases.
Joe?
Skip, do you have boilerplates of these two ordinances?
We do. They've been supplied to the board. I have them available for you tonight if you'd like them.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that Attorney Rentrup has those, too, so.
Sure.
You don't have to recreate the wheel.
I can email them over to them if you haven't already forwarded them, and they're in Word format for the clerk's convenience if you ask them. The other thing that is not on the agenda, if I may, though, you did mention it earlier. The state is undertaking dramatic changes to the MIP ordinance minor in possession. In January of next year, at state law, all minor in possession charges first offense will be a civil infraction. The problem is that the state has not adopted that law, and it's already been signed by the governor, in a context where it overrides local ordinances. They did that with the mental health code when they outlawed public intoxication as a crime. And if I understand correctly, I'm supposed to be scheduled to speak to the legislature to see if they'll do that so that 1,600 communities in Michigan don't have an opposing point of view to what state law is. And the problem is that if you have a situation where there's a state trooper and a local sheriff's deputy at the same house party, and one cites one child, one cites another, the state trooper is going to go under state law, the deputy is going to go under local ordinance, your ordinance is a 90-day misdemeanor. The state trooper is going to cite under state law, which makes it a civil infraction. So you have a disparate impact upon the individuals, and we'll be bringing that to your attention. But there are some other issues that the legislature's worked on in terms of this MIP statute that need refinement before I would suggest that you look at it. Hopefully, they're just going to override all local ordinance.
I really like that ordinance, because when I was growing up, I never did get caught by the grace of God, and I can't see putting a scarlet letter on a young man or young lady at 19-years-old who got caught having a couple beers.
Well, on a first offense, we have a complete agreement in that regard. Many communities make a first offense a non-jailable misdemeanor. Your community makes it a jailable misdemeanor. Most individuals on a first offense are placed on probation. The problem is, it seems so simple for a 17-year-old to walk into court with their parents or an attorney. They go before the judge. The judge assesses probation, and then they flop on probation, and they lose. There is a drug deferral that we give them, or, excuse me, a drinking deferral we give all first-time offenders, and just say, "You can stay away from alcohol and drugs for a year." This all goes away. It's like it never happened. The problem is many, many of these children just went too easy in court, and they flop. Yes?
What is the timeline that you see the state enacting this?
It's already enacted. It's, in my opinion, it's flawed, but February, January 1st of next year, at state law, MIP first offense will be a civil infraction. One of the problems they have is the second offense is a misdemeanor, and they didn't learn from the texting while driving statute. The first offense is not reported. So apparently, you're on the honor system. deferral we give all first-time offenders, and just say, "You can stay away from alcohol and drugs for a year." This all goes away, it's like it never happened. The problem is many, many of these children just went too easy in court, and they flop. Yes?
What is the timeline that you see the state enacting this?
It's already enacted. It's...in my opinion, it's flawed, but February...uh, January first of next year, at state law, MIP first offense will be a civil infraction. One of the problems they have is the second offense is a misdemeanor, and they didn't learn from the texting while driving statute. The first offense is not reported. So apparently, you're on the honor system. If you get caught on a second, you're supposed to tell the law enforcement officer, "You know, I've had this before."
I'm a frequent flyer.
I think they're gonna...yeah, I think they're gonna correct that with the help of Ruth Johnson at the Secretary of State.
Is there anything that the township needs to do in the meantime?
You know, my suggestion respectfully, and of course, I defer to general counsel, who is...who transcends my experience by quite a bit, but not by years.
That was...told you it all, man, Gary.
That was a jab.
Joe P. is chairs.
I would give it towards fall of this year, where you...I would suggest that you would look at it, because the legislature has yet to really wrap their arms around some of the deficits in their haste to get this thing on the books. It's sort of an odd law, because they passed it and said, "But it'll be in effect a year from now." And then there's some other issues. They have a search warrant requirement in a different statute that really confounds everything, so we're looking at trying to, from a practical standpoint, how to fix that. But before you tonight are the two ordinances, one's attempt to commit crime, which, again, we find to be very useful in certain circumstances, and the causing a police response, which takes jeopardy off of a person, but if they're a repeat offender, we'll cheerfully refund their fine, and we'll reissue the warrant. That's easy to do. Did anyone have any questions?
Yeah, Joe?
I move to authorize Attorney Rentrup draft a causing a police response ordinance and to draft an attempt to commit a crime ordinance to be considered for a first reading at the Charter Township Oxford Board Trustees meet June fourteenth, two thousand seventeen regular meeting, based on the ordinances provided to the Township Board.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any other questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Onto Pontiac Street paving bid award, Engineer Sharp.
Is that my letter, Kurt?
That is your letter, yes.
Yeah, "Good evening, board members. As you're aware, a couple months ago, we put a couple projects out for bid. One of them was this Pontiac Street paving. There were two...there were three bidders on the project. Two of them were very close. They were within forty-five hundred dollars of each other. The low bidder was Pavex Corporation," actually, four bidders, "and the second low bidder was F Allied Construction. In review of the references that came back, the references were Pavex. The ones that they provided to us were, as you would...as you would hope, they were acceptable, but through our due diligence process, we did speak with some additional clients, entities that they've done work for, and they did not provide the best references." I wanna call it a reference, because they didn't provide it to us, but through our due diligence, we found that some of the...some of the project was suspect for various reasons. F Allied, we researched their references as well, and everything came back very positive. We did a little further due diligence, just as we did with Pavex, and the references also came back very positive. So, based on the, you know, the cost, a two hundred fifty thousand dollar job, the difference being, you know, roughly forty-five hundred dollars, and from the references that were provided to us, we are recommending that F Allied be awarded the contract for the Pontiac Street paving project.
Any questions? Would there be a motion?
I move to award the Pontiac Street paving project, F Allied Construction, the base bid amount of two hundred fifty-seven thousand nine eighty-nine fifty, and authorize Supervisor William Dunn to sign any necessary documents on behalf of the Charter Township of Oxford. The two hundred fifty-seven thousand nine eighty-nine fifty base bid amount is to be expensed to the road fund account number two oh four, four four zero, eight eleven, point zero zero zero, restoration.
Support.
It's been moved and supported by Nichols. Any other questions? Roll call?
Trustee Nichols?
Yes.
Trustee Durk?
Yes.
Trustee Curtis?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes, and Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
Onto the Dunlap Road Water Treatment Plant, approval for filter tank repairs. Does the chairman of the Water Sewer Committee like to speak on this?
I sure can. We have Tank Number Four experienced a failure, and it's offline right now. WRC has gone out and captured the bids from contractors to repair the tank so we can get it back online before the summer water demand hits. In their bid process, they found one of the bidders subcontracted out some welding, and they are not an authorized certified welder to do that. So what happened is, we had to split the bid out between the coating and associated preparation work to one of its seven brothers incorporated, and then the welding and certification of those welds to Purvis and Foster. That'll get Tank Four back on, and in the interim, we are inspecting Tank One to determine if this repair process can be done on Tank One, which is showing signs of rusting and cracking, or if tank replacement is a better move. We found out tank replacement is fourteen weeks to order one. This one needs to be repaired now as we move into the summer heavy watering months, and we do have a motion, but if there's any questions, that'd be helpful to answer them for you. Yes, Joe?
Two, three are online, correct?
Two and...
One, two, and three?
One, two, and three are online. This is Tank Four.
If they put four on, one may have to be taken off?
Correct. And it won't be taken off until we deem it...
In the fall?
Yeah, almost failing. If it...if it almost fails, we'll take it off, but we won't take it off until fall to go through the heavy sprinkling months.
If you get down to two tanks and you're critical...
That's why we're doing this tank repair now. We don't...we're not assuming what-ifs. We're getting all four back running right now.
I move to approve a total project budget amount of one hundred ninety-five thousand dollars for the repairs of the filter vessel tank, Number Four, located at the Dunlap Road Water Treatment Plant, and of this one hundred ninety-five thousand project budget amount to where the coating and associated preparation work with the filter vessel tank, Number Four, to Seven Brothers painting, and not to exceed amount of seventy-five thousand eight hundred dollars, and to where the structural repairs for the filter vessel tank, Number Four, to Purvis and Foster Inc., and not to exceed amount of seventy-eight thousand four seventy. The cost for the filter vessel, Number Four, repairs paid for the Oakland County Water Resources Commissioners' Major Maintenance Reserve Fund account.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any other questions? Roll call?
Trustee Curtis?
Yes.
Trustee Nichols?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Trustee Durk?
Yes.
Okay, we're on to...
Liquor license.
Resolution for new quota liquor license. Who'd like to speak on this? Curtis?
I can speak on this.
Okay.
Board members, this is the first of three processes here to get to the approval of a liquor license, and this is the first one that we're going to approve a resolution to establish what's called an administrative rule. It's a resolution that we're just approving any blanket or request for a liquor license that comes to the township. So what this does is authorizes the township board to either approve or not approve the request for an agreement for a liquor license to remain in the township. So...
Is there any questions? Would there be a motion?
Here says we have to read the resolution.
Well, you don't necessarily have to, but it...because it's going to establish a policy for remaining quota licenses that you have, you may want to read it. It's not just unique to this application, but it'll be applicable to future applications.
Who would like to read this into the record?
I move to approve the resolution establishing administrative rule regarding issuance of new Class C liquor licenses as presented. Resolution establishing administrative rule regarding issuance of new quota Class C liquor licenses. The Charter Township of Oxford is required under the Michigan Liquor Code, being MCLA forty-four-three-six-point-one, ETSQ, to approve an application for a new quota Class C liquor license. For set license can be issued by the Michigan Liquor Control Commission. The township believes that the issuance of new quota Class C liquor licenses is a valuable tool to be utilized by the township for economic development purposes. Inasmuch as the township has only three new Class C...quota Class C licenses available to issue, the township believes that it should resolve to keep new quota Class C licenses in the township, as opposed to having a licensed business transfer the new quota Class C license out of the township. The Michigan Liquor Control Code allows for the transfer of new quota Class C licenses once they have been issued to a licensee. The allowable transfers will enable a licensee to transfer the new quota Class C liquor license out of the township, used in a different municipality, thereby demitting the township's ability to encourage economic development. Therefore, the township hereby sets forth and establishes the administrative rule of the township, requiring the applicant for a new quota Class C license to sign an agreement regarding liquor license, which shall be executed in the form attached hereto, which form may be revised by the township from time to time. Nothing herein shall be construed to the township...excuse...construed to require the township to issue any license or any way to limit the reasonable discretion of the township, reviewing and granting the approval of an application for a new quota Class C license. This resolution is hereby declared to have been adopted by the township board at a meeting carefully duly called and held on the tenth day of May, two thousand seventeen.
Second.
Roll call?
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Trustee Curtis?
Yes.
Trustee Durk?
Yes.
Trustee Nichols?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
And Clerk Wright, yes.
Let's move on to the agreement regarding the liquor license. Curtis, you're doing such a wonderful job.
All right, this is the second step in the process. Now, this is specifically based upon the resolution we just approved with the blanket agreement. This is the agreement specifically geared toward Mary Jo's Smokehouse, and this will be an agreement between Mary Jo's Smokehouse and the Township of Oxford, if approved.
I move to approve the agreement regarding liquor license between Mary Jo's Smokehouse LTT and the Charter Township of Oxford as presented.
Support.
Been moved and seconded by Curtis down there on the end. Roll call?
Clerk Wright, yes. Trustee Durk?
Yes.
Trustee Nichols?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Curtis?
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Let's move on to the liquor license application.
Because I didn't see a sample motion on this.
That was emailed to you today by way of Attorney Rentrup, and in your packet that was handed out in person, there's instructions for how this is supposed to be conducted.
Would you like to make the motion, Curtis?
I can make the motion.
Sure, Curtis, you know it.
Okay, he knows where it's at.
I move to approve the resolution for the Council Pearl liquor license that indicates whereas Mary Jo's Smokehouse Limited, a Michigan corporation doing business as Council Pearl, Council Pearl, or the applicant, has made application to the Charter Township of Oxford Township for a township quota Class C liquor license, license, and whereas this board makes the finding that each requirement is set forth in the township's liquor license ordinance, including those requirements set forth in code sections six dash thirty-four A, subsections one through eighteen, have been not complied with by the applicant, and whereas the applicant has agreed to execute and has provided the township with the executed agreement required by the township's resolution entitled Resolution Establishing Administrative Rule Regarding the Issuance of a New Quota Class C Liquor Licenses Adopted on May ten, two thousand seventeen, upon and as a condition of the issuance of the license. Now therefore be resolved that the township approves the issuance to the applicant of a township quota Class C liquor license subject to compliance with the following conditions precedent. A, complying with the requirements of the township resolution entitled Resolution Establishing Administrative Rule Regarding the Issuance of a New Quota Class C Liquor Licenses Adopted May ten, two thousand seventeen; B, complying with the terms and conditions of the agreement entitled Agreement Regarding Liquor License Agreement, which has been executed by the applicant and the township as part of this resolution of approval, the terms and conditions of which applicant has agreed to comply with and to follow, which agreement attached as exhibit A is hereby incorporated into and a part of this resolution. Be it further resolved that the township clerk is hereby authorized and directed to complete the blank spaces in the form entitled Government Approval, attached hereto as exhibit B, to execute the form where indicated, and to mail the completed form to the Michigan Liquor Control Commission.
The move? The move? Seconded? Ferrari? Roll call?
Trustee Nichols?
Yes.
Trustee Curtis?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Durk?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes, and Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
Congratulations, guys. Are you guys planning on leaving or sticking around? Because I'll take a two-minute break for you guys to scatter. I'll take a two-minute break. Okay, we're now back in session. Onto the Clinton River Water Resource Recovery Facility bond payment. I'm gonna give this to Jack.
Oh, thanks again, William. Let me open it up here. The Water and Sewer Committee was presented with a seven hundred and sixty thousand, two hundred and sixty-two dollar and fourteen cent apportionated bill from the...I wanna just say CRWRRF, the Clinton River Water Recovery...Resource Recovery Facility, for operating cost increases. And what the Water and Sewer Committee met and looked at the fund balances and determined that saving by not bonding the payment and by paying it out of our fund balance, we would save about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So we are recommending prepayment of that rather than bonding it.
I move to approve the resolution approving prepayment, the Clinton River Water Resource Recovery Facility drainage district...the drainage district drain bond series two thousand seventeen, estimated amount of seven hundred sixty-two thousand, sixty-two dollars and fourteen cents, to be expensed to sewer fund account number five nine zero, five two seven, nine nine one, zero zero zero. Principal payment, authorized Supervisor Dunn to deliver a certified copy of the resolution, the Oakland County Water Resources Commissioner.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other questions? Roll call?
Trustee Curtis?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
Trustee Nichols?
Yes.
And Trustee Durk?
Yes.
You want me to get the next one, too, Bill?
I bet it.
The Great Lakes Water Authority is proposing a sewer rate increase for several local and county communities, which includes the Oxford Township. The Oxford Township proposed rate increase was seven point nine percent for operating. This is not an increase in the amount of flow that we send. This is the cost of doing business with the GLWA. Rather than raise our sewer rates to capture this operating debt, we've analyzed the fund balances and projected out into the future, and it was deemed by the Water and Sewer Committee that we recommend to this board, we do not raise the sewer rates. That should be a welcome sigh of relief. We're not raising the sewer rates, we're paying this out of our fund balance.
Any other questions for Jack? Joe?
And I appreciate that we're doing that, but I really think as a system ages, we need to set up some type of sewer debt service, like we have for the water debt service, just as we start planning ahead. I mean, I'm thrilled that we're paying all these bonds off. There's gonna come a point where we're not gonna be able to do that, so I'd like to at least have to start planning to put some type of sewer debt service charge on the bills.
It'll be noted, Joe.
Remember, what is the system started in the seventies?
Seventy-two.
Seventy-two.
You can put me down also with agreeing with Joe on this one.
Noted.
I move that the Charter Township of Oxford sewer billing rates remain at the current eighty-six dollars per residential equivalent unit and thirty-sixty-four per meter cubic feet for Oxford Township sewer customers. These sewer billing rates will be analyzed on a regular basis, determine necessary future rate adjustments.
Support.
Moved and supported. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let's move on to Bernard.
Another Water and Sewer Committee.
Yeah, well, give it to you again, Jack.
Oh, thanks, Bill. BKG is Burton Katzman Group, the developer of Abbey Ridge. They entered into a sanitary sewer agreement with Oxford Township to put up a performance bond security funds in the amount of five hundred and fifteen thousand dollars to the Charter Township of Oxford. This agreement was made so we would ensure that our sanitary sewer systems were hooked up to the east receiver instead of going through the west or down M twenty-four. We agreed to allow them to start building and doing this, and in a sense, they said they would put up this money, this performance bond, before they had any temporary certificate of occupancies on all the apartments. Now, when we started talking with BKG in our Water and Sewer Committee at that level, they aren't looking...they aren't looking to not pay the performance bond before they occupy any of the apartments. What they were concerned with, and it's not captured in this, is they want to open up their temporary sales office...
their temporary sales office in the clubhouse. There would be one person there meeting and addressing future renters or buyers in the apartment condos, and if the township would have to allow for a TCO for just specifically the clubhouse, and the bond would still be put up before any occupants would move into the apartments themselves. So the recommendation of the Water and Sewer Committee was, we're going to deny the request to relieve them of paying five-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand-dollar performance bond before any TCOs of the apartments. But we considered and we are recommending that the building department allow them to use the clubhouse as a sales office for their employee to vet future renters. This will eliminate them bringing up a temporary trailer, temporary hookups. They just look, we're recommending they don't look real nice up there, but they have this nice clubhouse that's about ninety percent finished, and we would recommend that we allow the township building department to afford them a TCO for the clubhouse only. And then anytime somebody would move into the apartments, they would have to post the five-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand-dollar bond.
I move to deny the request from BKG Oxford LLC to extend the date to February fifteenth, two thousand eighteen, provide for performance security funds in the amount of five-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand-two-hundred as requested, letter dated April twenty-seventh, two thousand seventeen, Supervisor William Dunn, and to require BKG Oxford LLC to comply with a sanitary sewer agreement in August sixteenth, two thousand sixteen, between BKG Oxford LLC and the Charter Township of Oxford.
I'll second for discussion.
Moved and seconded. Discussion?
Do we need to recommend that they could do a temporary certificate of occupancy for the clubhouse so that they could use that as a sales? Or do we just do that administratively in the building department?
That'd be a separate motion after this one.
What do you think, Bill?
We'll do the motion.
Okay.
I think it's pretty simple. Clean?
Yes.
Uh, motion, and it was?
Seconded.
Seconded.
Yes.
Uh, roll call.
All right. Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Trustee Dur.
Yes.
Trustee Nichols.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Supervisor Dunn.
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
And Trustee Curtis.
Yes.
Let's move on to allowing them to get a temporary C of O.
What type of precedent do we set with that?
None.
So if somebody else wanted to do it?
Yes.
Because anybody could do it?
No, but they could ask.
Right. Well, we set a precedent. Let's say two other developers like to do it.
Here's how I looked at it, if you want a question answered, is if you have a three-hundred-thousand-dollar clubhouse that's almost finished, why would we move a temporary aluminum shelter up there and just spoil the view and the looks of the building for this? We've got over ten million dollars in project completed, and this clubhouse, which is a diamond, we would look at that and say, yes, it's okay. If someone else came forward with the same scenario and didn't have the three-hundred-thousand-dollar clubhouse and tried to manipulate something, we'd have to weigh that in on their own merit. This affords us the opportunity to work with the developer, have a nice clean showroom for their apartments, but it still has the advantage of holding ten million dollars worth of project for certificate occupancy until that bond is paid. So each one on their own merit, this is a good merit.
Yeah, but then, too, they're still not paying the five-fifteen yet.
They're not moving anybody into their apartments yet.
Yeah, but would the agreement say they had to pay that? The one that we just approved?
No. Yes. What it said was, before they move anybody into the apartments, into anything, they would have to post the bond. What we're asking for here is, in a motion, to allow them to move a person into the clubhouse and utilize it as a sales office.
And still defer the bond.
Still defer the bond. We're not deferring it because we're not authorizing any certificates of occupancy in the apartments.
It's still due.
Right.
Yeah, but...
You're not approving any occupancy.
Right.
Till the other conditions are met.
Of the apartments.
Right.
Of the apartments. But according to the agreement, the five-fifteen was due upon signing. Then we just denied it.
No, it's due upon a TCO request.
That's the recommendation. But right now, the five-fifteen-two-hundred is due as part of the project.
No, it's not due until they ask for a C of O.
The original agreement, I thought, was part of the project.
The original agreement's still in place. We're just doing an exception for the clubhouse.
We are protecting the township's interest by not allowing them to move anybody into the apartments until we have that five-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand dollars.
We still have the hammer.
What we're allowing them to do is utilize the sales office, which is an entity on its own, the clubhouse, for a sales office.
That I don't mind.
That's what we're asking.
But we're still like in the five-fifteen.
Yes, we are.
No one's moving in.
We're getting it at the same time.
No, that's all part of it. You look at the letter, Dane, it says, the five-fifteen, they say it will be issued prior to the first resident moves in.
That's right.
We're not getting it right now.
Because the first resident's not moving in.
No one's going to move in.
So we're deferring it anyway.
Would you break up this fight, Jim?
You're deferring it anyway.
No.
Then vote no.
No one's moving in.
Yeah, I mean, that's the way that the agreement says, no occupancy permits.
No one's moving in.
Okay? That's for any of the, there's eight buildings, there's seven apartments, and then there's the clubhouse. And so what they're asking for is to allow for a temporary occupancy permit for the clubhouse.
Only?
To use as their sales area, and the five-fifteen will be deposited at the time somebody moves into, yeah, they ask for a temporary for apartment one. So, yeah, I understand what you're saying. You're kind of deferring it in a way if they allow for the temporary C of O. The motion you just made says, we're not going to accept anything. So Jack's going to have to make another motion now to allow for a temporary for the clubhouse only, and then the five-fifteen, you know, gets...
The agreement's in place except for that.
Correct, right, Gary?
Yes.
Yeah. Is that clear as much?
The only caveat is the clubhouse. Uh, yes.
Attorney Rentrup, what's your opinion about issuing a temporary C of O? And is there any issues that...
Well, I think you have to waltz around your ordinance. It was not designed for this kind of issue. It was designed for your, you build the houses and we're not going to give you temporary certificate of occupancy until you get all your utility in there. This is a unique situation, certainly not unusual. It's done all over this state that I'm familiar with where they allow a clubhouse to be used for this purpose. So I think we could probably, while the ordinance really doesn't allow it, I think we could probably finesse the ordinance to permit it.
And for the clubhouse, I mean, all the, all the as built have completed, all the site utilities, there's a roadway, you know, there's pavement in there. So as far as health, safety, and welfare type items, as long as they get their billing approved, then that would be sufficient. The apartments, they don't have a parking lot or anything right now, so we're not going to allow any occupancy in there currently.
They almost view it as a freestanding, as if it was a standing house by itself.
Correct. Yes, yes.
Roll call.
There's no motion.
There's no motion.
Jack needs to make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion.
Somebody needs to make a motion.
I'm sick, I gotta go home.
I'll make a motion to afford BKG of Oxford LLC the TCO, Temporary Certificate of Occupancy, to utilize their clubhouse only for a sales, temporary sales office, and the rest of the agreement for the performance security funds remain in place upon proposed habitation of the seven apartment units.
Do you want to put a time limit on this temporary certificate of occupancy?
There already is a time limit.
February fifteenth, two thousand eighteen.
With that, I will support it.
But Jack, your motion says for all seven units. So you have all seven filled?
No.
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 But they're not going to...
You can't even start to fill them.
You can't even start to fill them.
Because the motion says for the filling of the seven units. So that means if all seven are full, then they'll pay us?
No.
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 That's what the motion says.
First C of O.
But that's not what the motion says.
My motion I made was to utilize the clubhouse for a temporary sales office and no one, and give them a TCO, but it does not allow anything to move into the other seven buildings until this performance bond is paid.
Okay, that's clear.
And just to clarify, I wouldn't say that you want to give them a TCO. I would say that it's contingent upon the building official's approval as well. You don't want to give it to a blanket lay if, if...
I'll amend my motion to include they will receive a TCO for the clubhouse only upon approval of the building official of Oxford Township.
I'll amend my support, then.
It's moved and supported. Yes.
Is it, is it seven units or eight units?
Seven, they're not units, it's actually seven buildings.
Seven buildings.
Seven buildings.
Roll call.
Uh, Treasurer Ferrari.
No.
Trustee Dur.
Yes.
Trustee Nichols.
Yes.
Trustee Curtis.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes.
Onto Oxford Village Summer Tax Collection Posting Agreement.
It's not me this time.
Board members, this is what we've kind of done the last couple of years for the village, and it's where you handle the back end of the processing. They've already signed it, and it's up to us to consider whether we want to do it again. I'll make a motion to authorize Treasurer Joseph G. Ferrari to execute the agreement for Oxford Village Tax BSNA postings as presented, attach the formal agreement to the minutes.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, Community Development CBDG.
Board members, the block grant, if we want to continue with the program for the years two thousand eighteen, nineteen, and twenty, so they requested us to adopt the resolution support. I'll make a motion that the Oxford Township Board Trustees resolves to opt into Oakland County's Urban County Community Development Block Grant CBDG programs for the years two thousand eighteen, nineteen, and twenty. Furthermore, Oxford Township resolves to remain in Oakland County's Urban County Community Development Programs, which shall be automatically renewed in successive three-year qualification periods of time. Until such time, it is in the best interest of Oxford Township to terminate the cooperative agreement.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I'll make a motion to beat an open session, entertain a motion and take a roll call vote regarding calling a closed session for the purpose of discussion to consider the purchase or lease of real property as permitted pursuant to MCL fifteen-point-two-six-eight-D.
Support.
Moved and supported. Roll call.
Trustee Curtis.
Yes.
Hold on. I said who we're going to include. Can I amend that?
Yep.
I amended to include Attorney Rentrup and Engineer Sharp.
And according to Secretary...
And according to Secretary Richter.
I'll second, I'll amend the support.
Sorry about that.
Okay, roll call.
Trustee Curtis.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Trustee Dur.
Yes.
And Trustee Nichols.
Yes.
Take a two-minute recess.
Advise the MDEQ grant to cover the roughly sixty acres of wetlands in the Elkview litigation to be managed by Six Rivers Land Conservancy. Furthermore, we authorize Sharp Engineering to delineate the wetlands as part of the MDEQ grant for not to exceed an amount of five-thousand dollars.
Support.
Moved and supported. So you're going after a grant for fifteen-thousand dollars.
Pretty much.
Roll call.
Trustee Curtis.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari.
No.
Clerk Wright, yes. Trustee Dur.
Yes.
Trustee Nichols.
Yes.
And Supervisor Dunn.
Yes.
Six to one, okay. Hey, listen, I got direction, that's all I need. I'm happy for direction, just so I can start moving things.
Well, you know, we all kind of kid about this, but Joe's been working on it fifteen years and then...
Oh, 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 oh.
I'm not finished, don't, oh, oh, oh.
I got the first ten years of that.
I was going to say, there's people here that have been working. I know when I came in here, I thought I was going to, let's get this shit done and get done with it, let's...
I woke up.
And it didn't happen.
Let's get that one, once we're done here, and go to the offices and tell them what we need to do on that.
Well, the train has left the station, so...
Well, I'll let the state know in about ten minutes.
Is there anything else?
To our agendas, sorry for what it means.
Would there be a...
I am sure most public comments...
Board of trustee comments?
Yes.
Starting down there.
Um, you know, Jim, I don't want, you don't get to talk tonight, but the Water Main Project is underway. They're hot and heavy going at it. It's looking good.[1670.53]